Everyone, um, it is five P M on Monday, March twenty eighth. I'd like to call to order an Education Operations Committee meeting of the Wassa School Board. Uh, first item, I will seek a motion to approve the minutes of February twenty eighth, two thousand twenty-two.
So moved.
Second.
First and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, item three, public and student comment. We have none this evening. Moving on to item number four, uh, life after high school presentation. Um, we have, uh, Dr. Rousher is going to be joining us as well as, do we have someone else, Sharon Belton?
Yes.
Of WHIPS, okay. Before we get going, Jennifer, one other thing, I, I see we've got about fifteen minutes allotted for this, and I, I'm gonna ask that we allow you guys to give your presentation and hold our questions until the end. I, I found this weekend, as I was going through it, I was starting to mark down a lot of questions in the Moira Rata, my answer answered, so I wanna make sure we give you guys your, um, your due time here.
Perfect, thank you, Pat. Good evening, everybody. Uh, the opening slide here is just a little bit of background. Keith and I talked earlier, and we thought this would be helpful for you to see not just the really good information that Sharon has to present from the study, but sort of the bigger context of how it fits in our district. So, starting in the middle there, you see our whole child, Ho Wassa. Of course, always starting with our mission about advancing student learning, achievement, and success. And then if you were looking at the full strategic plan and achievement, there's also a line in there about inspiring students to achieve at their full potential. So, really, our, one of our goals, when you look at that success piece or the full potential, is to help students develop their own pathway, find their niche, find something that gets them excited, and then leave us with all the right doors open for them to achieve those things. So that's, of course, our, our big picture, K twelve. Then on the left side of the screen, you've got the redefining ready within Wisconsin, and that helps us to define exactly what might that success or that readiness look like when students leave. So there's, it's talk about being both college and career ready. It's not an either or, it's a both. And they've also added the idea of being life-ready. So there's national research on what helps students be ready in that way, and then Wisconsin has looked at it specifically for our students as well. And Wisconsin has a, a vision now that every student graduates from high school academically, socially, emotionally, and life-ready, that full package. So, part of that, our high schools this year are actually developing local report cards that will look at the, the metrics, both the definition and some of the metrics, and let people know where our students are, and also give our students some targets to shoot for, and we're working with CISA nine to do that work. Then in the center on the bottom, you see Leader and Me. That is really our, our program, again, K twelve, to help kids develop some of those life-ready skills. And you're familiar with all the different, um, pieces of that, I'm sure, but things like proactive and beginning with the end in mind and first things first. Those are all those personal traits or personal strategies, and that ties into this kind of planning. And then when you think about working with others, you have the win-win thinking, seeking first to understand and synergy as some of those traits, and of course, sharpening the saw, taking care of yourself and others, so you can do these things well. And then you've got academic and career planning, and two images there. Again, that's a, a Wisconsin initiative. And the idea there is, this is the process that we use to support students in developing that really informed pathway. So we want every student to get to graduate having not just a, a goal, but a specific pa- plan to achieve that goal. And it actually starts much earlier, it starts early middle school. So they're working on that plan and developing the skills and the strategies they need to be successful when they leave us. So all of those things tie together. And when we, inside the school district, look at what we're doing, we can make a huge list of things that we're doing to help achieve these, and we can feel pretty good about it. But it really doesn't matter what we think so much as it matters what our students and our families and the rest of the community thinks. So that's where the questions in the middle come in. We really wanted to get a better idea of how are we doing with these things? And maybe even more importantly, how can we improve? How can we keep getting better? So that's where we turn to Dr. Sharon Belton. She's a Senior Public Policy Fellow at WHIPS, which is the Wisconsin Institute for Public Policy and Service. And we really wanted to do some intentional research and have a very credible research partner. So with that, I will let Sharon take it away.
Thank you. Let's see if the clicker works, okay. Cassie, get that full screen. Okay, so thank you very much for letting me come and share the results with you of the three projects we did related to looking at how employers, students, and parents feel about how the district is doing with respect to college and career readiness. I'm giving you a very high-level, um, brief snapshot summary of the analysis that we did, but can refer you to Jennifer or Dr. Hiltz to get the detailed reports that underlie all that I'll talk about tonight. Just very briefly, um, we are part of the University of Wisconsin system. We're based here at UW Stevens Point at Wassa, but we do projects across the state with organizations that might need some assistance answering a particular public policy question or research question. Our goal is to take either the technical or policy expertise of all of the UW system and work and partner with organizations that really want objective, credible, and transparent information to help them make more informed decisions. Um, we don't take positions on public policy issues, and we don't make recommendations. So you're not gonna hear me say, "Tonight, the Wassa School District should do this, you should do that." My goal, and our goal, was to really provide a foundation of information that the district can use to make more informed decisions about the whole area of college and career readiness. So, what were some of the, the guiding questions that prompted this analysis? Was really to gather information that could help the district guide its decision-making in a couple of areas. First of all, um, the first one being, what role should the district play in helping students prepare for life after high school? How aware are parents, students, and employers within the district of what college and career readiness resources are available to them? And more importantly, what's working, what's not working, and what needs to be improved? And what are some ideas that students, parents, and employers had about, um, what could be done to improve college and career readiness activities within the district? Excuse me. So, what did we do? Real briefly, we talked to people, and we talked with people. We talked with, um, area employers, doing one-on-one interviews with executives and leaders of area companies. We did eleven one-on-one interviews. We did focus groups with current seniors at Wassa East and Wassa West. We did nine virtual and in-person focus groups totaling fifty-eight students. These are members of the class of two thousand twenty-two. And we also talked with parents and guardians of East and West students. Um, we did a total of five focus groups with parents, um, a total of sixteen individuals that participated. And in, in terms of focus group methodology, this is a pretty standard, um, approach. You know, the, the value of a focus group is to really be able to have in-depth, personal discussions with people to understand why and what they feel about specific topics in comparison to a survey where you're really trying to get representative information from a larger population of people. And I've, I think we, we accomplished that through the conversations that we had, um, with district staff, or excuse me, with district parents and students. So, this slide really is intended to summarize, you know, from the fifty-eight students, from the sixteen parents, from the eleven employers, what was really the big overarching theme that we heard from the focus groups in terms of what stakeholders from, want from the district in terms of college and career readiness? They want exposure to career options. They want the op- opportunity to explore career options in detail. They want to be able to experience what it's going to be like in the real world in terms of specific jobs and occupations. And they want engagement with the district about what resources are available, how to go about accessing career options and explore them and experience them and be exposed to them. So, really, these are some of the, the main points that came across from all of the conversations that we had and kind of are the key takeaways in terms of what, what are parents expecting of the district in terms of college and career readiness? And I'll, I'll talk about a few of the key findings from the study in, in the next couple of slides. So first of all, you know, we had this captive audience of students who are about to graduate. You know, we, and we specifically tried to talk with students that had been with the district through their middle school years, all through high school. And we, we wanted to talk with them about what are some of the key factors that have impacted what your current plans are in terms of what you're going to do after you graduate? And I say current plans because we know that kids change their mind a lot. And so we're really looking at a snapshot of what their thoughts were as of the time that we talked with them, which was, you know, during the, the first semester of their senior year. Um, and we also talked with parents. And it was very clear across the board from all of the focus groups that we did that students and parents really value the high caliber of teachers that are within the district. There was a very high, um, value placed on the variety of classes that students have access to, both at East and West, and the scope of extracurricular activities, um, that students have access to. Not just sports, not just music, but also things like DECA, Future Farmers of America, things like that, that allows students the opportunity to experience, you know, a, a particular occupation or career in more detail. So, the teachers, the classes, and the extracurriculars really had played a, an important role in some of the decisions that, that students were, were making and were pursuing after high school. That being said, we also heard that non-school factors really played an important role in the current plans of a lot of the students that we talked to. And this could mean a parent that had a particular occupation that, um, really had an impact on how a student thought about what they might wanna do, or a grandparent, or an uncle, or a family member. A lot of the parents and a lot of the students mentioned that parents were very involved in trying to help them connect with people in the community that they could talk to to either do a job shadow or, or just get a little bit more information about what it would be like to be a police officer, for example, or a physician, or a teacher. So, really, it's the school environment plus what's going on outside of school that was really influencing what the fifty-eight kids that we talked with are deciding to do after college. And so those partnerships between the schools, the parents, and the external environment that kids are living in, that's really having an impact on what, what paths they're deciding to take. Now, we also heard from a lot of the students, and keep in mind, these are current seniors, that their middle school years really played an important role in what they're deciding to do now. Um, and this was both positive, but also some opportunities maybe to, um, you know, think about what's going on in the middle school setting. In particular, we heard from quite a few kids that were pursuing either, um, employment after high school or pursuing a technical education, that exposure to technical, um, uh, education activities in middle school really set them on a path in high school and such that they're going to be pursuing that as a career option. So, giving the students the exposure to tech ed classes in high school really kind of set them on a path, um, in terms of influencing what they're going to be doing next. And at the same time, we did hear from quite a few students that in some, some of them felt that there was a lot of pressure or a lot of e- expectation during the middle school years that they start thinking about their careers, but they really weren't ready to process what that meant, and that they weren't really able to think about, um, "I don't know what I wanna do, I'm in middle school." But, and while they valued the conversations, a lot of them felt like, "Well, I'm not really sure I know what I wanna do yet, and there's just a lot of pressure and expectation." That being said also, we heard from parents and kids that the eighth grade year was really an important time to help kids and parents understand and select classes in high school that would impact what kind of path or trajectory that they would be on. That what kind of math class, they're, they're choosing their ninth grade math class in eighth grade, choosing their ninth grade science class, that kind of sets them on a path for, you know, how those classes build upon each other. So really, um, that eighth grade year really had an important, um, uh, building block, if you will, in terms of what those kids are doing now. In terms of just general feedback from students and parents on the district's college and career planning activities, you know, one thing that we did hear from the parents and the students that we talked to was that, and their comments are, you know, were, could be kind of aggregated into this first bullet point, that the district's career planning activities were described as inconsistent, lacking in continuity, and perfunctory. And what this meant from the student's perspective is that they didn't always see the connections between what they were doing, you know, at one point in time in their homeroom, and what's gonna come next, and when is that gonna be, and how does this relate to what I learned the last time? And they didn't necessarily see how all of the things that they were doing were fitting together to help them with their career planning. Zello, the career planning software that the district uses to help expose kids to different career options, was an area where the kids felt that they really needed to see the connections between what information Zello was giving them in terms of careers, and how do I connect this with what comes next? How do I use this information to help me think about what I wanna do? How does this help me pick what classes I wanna take or be exposed to certain careers? There were, you know, many students and parents that we talked to that, um, had very positive interactions with their school counselors in terms of helping them with their college and career planning, but there were also many that felt that the, the large burdens that were currently, um, placed on school counselors meant that they weren't able to get the information and the resources they needed from their school counselor specifically related to college and career planning. And there was a lot of empathy for the workloads that the school counselors had. And, you know, in, in the, in some cases, the students felt like they, they didn't know who to go to for college and career planning because they didn't wanna overburden their counselors, and they, they maybe didn't know who to access in terms of getting help with their college and career planning. And we heard very similar comments from the parents and the students that we talked to. And, you know, if you go back to the earlier slide that I showed, we talked to about fifty-eight students and sixteen parents, but there was a lot of consistency in the feedback that we heard from both. So, we didn't talk to every student's parent, and we didn't talk to a student of every parent that we talked to, but there was a lot of consistency in the themes, which was, you know, very reassuring. So, helping the students understand who do they go to with, when they have college and career, um, questions was, was something that was very important to them and their parents. The students wanna see connections between what they're learning in the classroom and how does this translate into a job? One student, for example, was taking a sociology class. They loved the class, they loved the teacher, but they didn't know what kind of job could I get? Or what could I do in sociology that would help me with a job? Another area was, um, finance and economics. A student really loved his economics class. Well, what kind of job could that translate to into the real world? So they wanted to see those connections between what they were learning in the classroom and how that would translate into, you know, a potential career path. And overwhelmingly, the, the kids and especially the, especially the parents would like to see the district continue and reinforce all of the opportunities that kids have access to with respect to getting hands-on experiences and knowing what is, what would a particular job be like? And being able to try that on, if you will, either through a job shadow, um, an interview, a one-on-one conversation with somebody working in a particular career, apprenticeships, clubs, you know, all of those things that give the student the sense of, you know, what a particular career is like in the real world. The, the students that we talked to, um, really recognized that their parents and their guardians were playing a key role in what was going to happen, um, you know, post, um, high school. Some of them liked that, some of them, you know, wanted a li- a little bit more freedom to, to choose what they wanted to do. But, in a lot of cases, the kids perceived that their parents weren't necessarily able to help them because they didn't have access to a lot of the information resources that they needed. And this was particularly the case for kids who, they described themselves as first-generation college students, and even the kids who had parents who, you know, were very involved and had, had access to information for them. There was a lot of sensitivity among the kids and the parents about, you know, kids that may want to go to college but might not know how to, to make that step in terms of when to apply, what is the FAFSA, how do I fill it out? You know, some of those things that, if you have a parent who went to college, they might be able to help you, but if you didn't, you know, how do you go and access that, that information? The parents, and I will say, the parents that we talked to, I would describe as probably on the more informed end of the spectrum of parents. And even knowing that we talked to a fairly informed group, they expressed concern that they didn't always have awareness of the resources that were available to them or to their students in terms of specifically, um, more likely, uh, college planning. That they wanted a bigger-picture timeline of what did they need to be doing to help their student freshman year, sophomore year, junior year? We did have one parent, you know, she, she kind of felt bad because she didn't realize that her daughter should be looking at colleges the summer before her junior year, or summer before her senior year, and that she wished that she had taken some time last summer to go look at colleges. So just helping parents understand those stepping stones that they need to be aware of to help support their student that might wanna go to college. And the parents also expressed a need for more proactive and personal communication and outreach. You know, less reliant on e- less reliance on emails, more accessible information. I think, you know, there's, it's a tricky situation for the district when there is, you know, a lot of information available, but parents wanna consume it in a way that makes most sense for them. And it's very challenging to be, to be able to predict how one individual is gonna wanna best receive information, but that is something that we heard, that parents want personal communication, they want engagement, and they want outreach about, about these topics. I'm gonna quickly go through the next four slides because I wanna, I wanna stay on time, but we, I wanna focus on just highlighting a couple of things that we heard from parents and students in terms of what are some opportunities for improvement? Things the district might be able to start doing, um, to better support parents and students with college and career planning. The first thing I'll talk about is just exposure to career options and job preparation. Really making those connections between the, the very broad set of courses that are available to kids in the district and continuing to expand the diversity of courses, particularly in areas that are high-demand, um, jobs. Providing kids opportunities to understand before they register for classes what a particular class is like. So, almost, it was described almost like a course open house where you could learn a little bit more about a class before you registered to see if you might wanna take it. Continuing to bring in speakers, career fairs, mock interviews. There was also a lot of sensitivity to making sure that kids understood that there were our, and are legitimate alternatives to college, pursuing the trades, pursuing technical education, communicating the value of technical schools, and really just helping them understand the value of a specific occupation in, in the real world. A consistent theme we heard in every single focus group, both with the kids and the parents, is that they need this information sooner. Senior year is too late to be talking about college and career planning. The discussions about what do you wanna do? How do you need to go about doing it need to happen earlier? And ideally, in the minds of the kids and the parents, it should, should happen freshman year and be, continue to be reinforced year after year so that when the, the child is, a student is a senior, they have a pretty good idea of what they need to do and when. Um, and having more consistency and when, in terms of when students get exposed to those things and follow-ups and opportunities for reminders. And involving the parents perhaps in more, um, personal or smaller group settings based on what path a student is going, you know, to be taking. Having certain information communicated to parents of kids that are college-bound, workforce-bound, or technical school-bound. And just making the whole process of career exploration a little bit more engaging as, as opposed to, you know, maybe allocating a certain amount of time in a homeroom on any given day to, you know, fill out, um, some type of college and career readiness information. I mentioned improving communication and outreach, making it more personal, providing more information, support, making the career centers more visible, both to parents and kids, helping them understand what resources there are available at the career centers, and just helping parents be more engaged in the process, um, including at those school counselor meetings. Some parents described situations where they, they felt that the meeting was just like checking a box. And instead, maybe having more of a dialogue with the parent and the student in terms of, you know, what are some next steps, what are you interested in? As opposed to, you know, let's just get this done and move on. And then there's sort of this, this whole area related to college prep resources. Providing students and parents with more help and resources with respect to college and career planning. You know, right now, a lot of the college and career planning, um, seems to be done in the context of the homerooms. And, you know, maybe making sure that, that those homeroom teachers have access to the resources and information they need to help each kid based on what path they're, they're planning to go on. The parents really wanted something in writing that they could look at, not necessarily online, but they could see laid out a timeline going from left to right so that they could make sure that their child was meeting all of those different milestones in terms of when to take the ACT, when to start studying, when to look at colleges, when to fill out the FAFSA, all of those things. Help with the Common App. We were talking with, with seniors in December, and there were a couple of them that didn't know what the Common App was. And that's, you know, the main way you apply to college, um, you know, right now, is through the Common App. So, in the reports themselves, you know, I've given you the, the very high-level, quick version. There is supporting, um, information on all of the topics that I've talked about. We know, one of the benefits of a focus group is, you know, you don't have charts and tables, you have words. You have the benefit of, of the quotes that we heard from the kids and the parents, and all of that is included in the reports. And it, it helps kind of bring to life, you know, the bullet points. Um, what does that really mean from the kid's perspective? The last slide that I wanted to touch on has to do with feedback from employers. You know, the employers that we talked to, you know, they expressed, obviously, we all know that there are some significant workforce challenges in our area, both in terms of shortages and some very high-demand careers. And concerns by some employers that younger entry-level employees may not necessarily be prepared for the realities of the workforce showing up on time. You know, just the basics of, of maintaining a job. And a lot of the students that we talked to, I would say the vast majority of them had some kind of job that they are doing or have done during high school, and they all saw significant value in being able to work during high school as a way to help prepare them for their job, um, you know, after high school. The employers that we talked to, you know, really wanted students to understand the value, the costs and benefits of, if you will, of a four-year versus a two-year degree, and making sure that kids understood fully and could make objective decisions about all of their options. One of the, the, um, interviewees that we talked to felt that, that schools often use what was described as a shotgun approach to career exploration, which is consistent with what we heard from the kids in terms of it not being, um, lack, or if, if lacking in continuity, that it was just coming at them at different points in time and maybe not kind of, um, having a continuous path that they could then follow, which, at least according to, you know, one of the individuals that we talked to, had the effect of confusing kids. And that one of the, the ways that the schools could help with this is to help align the classes with the students' interests. And helping the counselors or those who are advising the kids, you know, have more firsthand information about specific jobs and specific occupations and what might be needed, um, in terms of preparation for that particular job. We also heard from employers that there were ve- limited to no opportunities for them to engage with parents on career-related activities, and that they really do have a genuine interest in wanting to partner with schools. And, you know, I, I wanna close just by reiterating that And, you know, I, I want to close just by reiterating that, you know, the purpose of this project was to identify opportunities to improve. It was very clear from the parents that we talked to. I want to just reemphasize the value that the parents and the students placed on the teachers, you know, the classes that are offered to kids and the coursework. You know, this really wasn't a project that was undertaken to identify, you know, what's going great. It was, you know, we wanted to identify for you and for the, the administration, you know, what, what do parents really think, what do they expect, and what can be improved? So I, I think we accomplished that goal. I think we've had some really excellent discussions with Jennifer and Keith about, you know, what we heard. And, you know, what happens next, I guess, is up, is up to the district. But I'm happy to answer any questions you have about the reports. I would encourage you to, to take a look at them and just, you know, read for yourselves the feedback that we heard. Because you have some very, very articulate students, very interested and engaged parents on this topic.
Thank you. Questions? Where's, Jane?
I have several. First of all, I was wondering, who are the families and the students? Were they from different socioeconomic backgrounds? And I ask that because when you're talking about going to look at colleges, you know, your junior year in the summer, after your junior year, we have families that can't do that. They can't do it because they're working, they don't have a vehicle. And I always feel that those kids are kind of being left behind. It sounds like we were talking about the more affluent, that's the right word.
The students that we talked to were all pursuing different paths. We talked to kids from East and West that were going into the workforce right after high school. We talked to students that were going to a two-year technical school or a two-year associate's degree program or a college-bound program. And we really wanted to talk to kids from all of those different pathways. We didn't collect any demographic information from the students or the parents on their race, ethnicity, socioeconomic background. And I didn't, and I wouldn't assume, based on, you know, looking at the kids that we talked to or the parents, you know, what their background was. But we did hear from many of the kids that, you know, they might be the first person in their family who might want to go to college. And so making sure that those kids know, you know, how to go about the, the college search process or access information online. You know, you don't need to visit colleges in person these days. Most of them are doing virtual programming and just helping them, you know, realize, you know, you don't need to go to Madison, to look at UW-Madison, you could do a virtual tour. But, but that is a, a very good point in terms of making sure that college and career planning is sensitive to, you know, all families' personal situations and needs, for sure.
And I, I, I always cringe when it's the college or career bound because there's so much other education out there. I wish they would just say, following an academic path or a career path. Because when we say college, that shuts down a lot of kids who have never had any intention of going to college. And we have so much, I mean, there's jour-, uh, journey or the tech colleges. And I really wish we, we would acknowledge that every time and not just assume that people know what we're talking about.
Yeah, and we, we were very specific, and, and the district was very specific in terms of making sure that we included students that were in trades-related classes or doing apprenticeships and who had every intention of going down that path for their career. And the, in the reports themselves, we do include a lot of feedback from those kids.
Anything else? Lee?
One of the things that I've thought for a long time is that if you can connect a child and their interest and passion with their abilities, and you can start doing that very early on and then guide them in those directions, there's a tremendous advantage. And I've been concerned about the fact that I think that a lot of parents are pushing their kids to go to college when college is really not fit with their passion, but the pressure's coming from parents in one direction. And, and the parents really don't often have the education and don't understand that in some instances, you can go through an apprenticeship program, through a union perhaps, and become an electrician, make a very comparable salary or maybe a better salary without any, any major debt to incurred. And, and I just think there, the education with the parents and families about what's happening and what the options are in today's society is very, very important. The other question I had, you talked about talking to employers when, when I attended the state conference. One of the things that I had noticed was that the unions had a number of programs that they were, they were reaching out to and making available to kids. Did you happen to talk and do any research around what union kinds of programs were available?
No, we did not as part of this, this project, but that's, that's a, a very interesting angle, if you will, an interesting subset of information that would be interesting to, to gather, to understand, you know, what insights that could give to kids in terms of career paths. And regarding your first point, we did talk with the kids and ask them, do you feel pressure to pick a particular career or take a particular path from your parents? And most of the kids said no. That they felt that their parents were being supportive of what they wanted to do. There were some kids that felt like, well, you know, I have to go to college, that's just expected. But I, I actually heard fewer kids saying that they felt pressure to do one thing or another than I had originally expected when we were asking that question. So, but your point is well-taken that the kids definitely look to their parents for help and guidance. And making sure the parents have the resources to provide that help and guidance would be very important.
Thank you, this is very interesting report.
Thank you.
Mr. Boucher?
Sharon, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
I gotta hit this, I forgot the last time, so I won't do that again. I, I smile at all of this because I, I'm thinking, my grandson, if he hears me ask one more time, what are his career plans, I think he's going to walk away from me the next time I see him. But I'm, and there's just not enough communication about it. And that's one of the things that I was thinking about. Every group has a pitfall that they're fighting for themselves. Kids have, students have that thought, okay, I'm, I don't have a clue what I want to do. And then we're talking to them about gradual release of responsibility. You know, let's take responsibility for your learning. When does that happen? Sixth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade? Career Cruising was a famous software for a period of time. And I thought, oh my gosh, we're asking fourth graders what they think they may want to do with the 16 clusters, et cetera, et cetera, work, career clusters. So that's a pitfall. And then, Lee, you hit a, a, one that I've been always talking about with employers in town. You know, youth apprenticeships. But the problem is, a lot of employers don't know how to connect with the school, how to connect with the counselors, how can they connect with students so that they can get them in an apprentice program? So I think that would be a very good way of hitting our community and our employers in our community. The other, the other thing I was looking at and listening very carefully to is, these guys have heard this before, the three Rs, rigor, relevance, and relationships. You know, the relevance of a classroom, a relevance of geometry. Well, we need to talk about the relevance so that the student understands. Again, it goes back to the student. The students need a lot of help and, and we need to guide them. So, but the last group that I want to talk about is the parents. I'm out of suggestions when it comes to getting parents involved because I think I've hit every type of media possible with websites, with email, with texting, with career night, to counselor night, to career day. You know, how do we get the parents involved? And, and I think I'm going to always ask our, our people that are dealing with parents daily, how do we do that? And I would strongly encourage them. So what I've seen is, we need to strongly encourage ourselves to continue to communicate, and how do we do that? So I appreciate what you gathered for us, Sharon.
Sharon?
First of all, thank you for this. This has been very interesting to look at. As a, a parent of a current senior and a recently graduated senior, I could have echoed literally every answer that you just described, like verbatim. What is working really, really well? And I think that's been, the class selection and options are phenomenal. The courses, the teachers, and the extracurriculars are so available. I can really appreciate the overabundance of needs that are being met by our school counselors that college and post-high school planning is, just feels like it's the last thing. Because the other needs, of course, are more urgent oftentimes. And so as a parent, personally, I felt like this was all on me. And I can really relate to, I was grateful for my second, that I had the experience with my first. And with my first, I relied on other parents further down the road. And so I think this is outstanding to have this information so that we can provide it to parents and they don't feel like they're drowning. Or students who don't have the support at home with parents who would even know how to go about that. My, I really appreciate the paper timeline. I'm, I'm a paper kind of girl. And I think even with course handbooks, they've gone to digital. And I am grateful that I had a student when it was still paper. And I made a copy of it when it was, and you can still print them off, but they're like this thick. So I'm grateful and I've kept it and I've had a copy for all my future kids coming up. And I think that paper timeline, when there's an eighth grade meeting preparing for high school, where you start talking about that course path, that, that's the time to say, you're going to have standardized testing coming that matters if you're thinking about, and, and all of that. Like, this is when you might want to look at tech school, trades, all of that. So I love that idea and I hope we can figure out how to implement that. I also really appreciate just figuring out how we can get more information accessible to these students and parents. It's outstanding information. So I guess I'm, I'm excited, I know you can't necessarily give us recommendations on how to implement these changes, but I think they're really needed and, and really exciting to have the information. So I don't necessarily have any questions other than to say, yes, yes, all of these things, for sure.
John?
I don't have much to add because I agree with what everything that's been said so far. I guess I would just add that I hope that the district and the administration and staff will look at those, like, evening sessions for, you know, college and career planning tutorials and online videos that, you know, we could come up with that if someone can't make an evening session, at least they could click a link and watch a video. The timelines is a great thing. I, I am kind of a paper person too, I keep everything down on, on paper. But it's, yeah, just making sure that we're providing those resources, you know, to the, to the students and the families is, should obviously be a, a focus, and I know it will be.
Lance?
Yeah, one comment and one question. The comment is, again, on this timeline thing. So I'm a parent of a sophomore. And you had mentioned that a lot of the parents weren't sure of the timeline and how the steps, especially if they didn't go to college. Well, I went to college and I don't remember the application process. I barely remember college, so. I think it has more to do, yeah, I think it has more to do with what Karen said is, parents for their first child going through, I have no idea. So having that timeline, even if it was just sent out by email, and I'll just print it out, just, just like what was suggested, saying, this is, this is when the ACT is taken. Here's the places where you go for the ACT prep. This is when you have to do applications, this is when you have to do this. Would be really helpful, like, helpful enough that it should be done this year. And my question that I have is, is, did you get a sense from, because there is this idea of, there's kind of too much information and a sort of a scattershot shotgun approach in terms of exposure. And that it would be nice to sort of be focused on a track. But on the other hand, there's that balance there. You don't want a, a 14-year-old child trying to decide what their career is going to be and then that's their track through high school. When if they had a more of a shotgun approach, they would have learned that, you know what? Being that electrician isn't actually what I want to be because I got hit with this thing my junior year and it, and I love it. So did you get, I know you said you're not going to tell us what to do, so I'm trying to phrase my way, question a way that you can. Did you get a sense from the people that you talked to of how they would suggest to you to suggest to us how to balance that?
No.
Tried.
I will say, there was, I get, to, to answer that in two different ways. First, looking at middle school. There were some parents, a few parents, that felt like the, the current approach to middle school of an elective approach where kids can choose was a nice way to allow kids to kind of explore what they're interested in. And there was another subset that felt like there needed to be a more systematic, you should get exposed to, everyone should get exposed to, you know, all these areas to make sure that everybody got access to the same basic, you know, set of, of, of information. So I think because the, you know, the middle school years are so important from, in retrospectively, from the perspectives of the students and the parents, providing an appropriate balance in middle school in terms of how kids get exposed to certain career areas, but recognizing that there needs to be that sort of safety valve, if you will, that some kids are not just, they're just not going to be ready to be processing that information or have the maturity to be processing that information at that age. I mean, that's a, a policy decision for the district in terms of what is the goal of middle school. And then secondarily, there was a lot of sensitivity on the part of the parents that we talked to about making sure that kids have access to all of the options. And, you know, not, maybe not necessarily understanding how to give kids that exposure, but even the parents of kids who were planning to go to college recognized that there were alternatives and that they wanted to make sure that, you know, kids were aware of what those alternatives are. And the kids themselves, they seem to think about what you're talking about from the perspective of being able to take different classes. For example, the health occupations class, and I don't know if that's offered at both high schools, but that came up multiple times in multiple groups as something that was really, really impactful for the kids that took it in a couple of ways. Some realized, they took the class and realized, I love health, I want to pursue a health-related field. And others took it and said, no way, this isn't for me. So ruling in and ruling out are equally important. And from the kid's perspective, having those hands-on experiences was really important for some of them to rule out things that they had thought they wanted to do since they were, you know, in elementary school. So.
Okay. All right. A couple, just real quick questions, I guess. I noticed we had the East and West logos on that slide. Did we include the alternative high school or any WAVE students in the analysis?
No.
Other than the WAVE, the East and West students who sometimes take WAVE classes. So there would have been some students in there that have accessed WAVE, but we can seek out full-time WAVE or EEA students.
Okay. I think that that would probably be good information to get because they're on a very different paths and have access to very different sets of information as well. So if we can incorporate or get that feedback somehow, I think would be beneficial. The, the other question I have is, so I, I know you're not telling us what to do, but there are 420 other districts in our state. Do you have visibility into schools that are doing this well? Like, can you point us to, here is a school that has their stuff together, here's the best practice, here's their roadmap? I mean, there's no point in... point in us reinventing it if there's already programs alter that work well.
I mean, we're not education consultants, you know, at WHIPS. Is that information we could gather? Yes. Is it information we gathered as part of this project? No, that wasn't within the scope of the project. However, in the employer report, we did ask employers, the employers that we talked with, you know, that exact question. Are there models out there that you're aware of? Are there other districts? And if you go back to the, and I don't want to speak to, without going back to the report, I don't want to cite or quote anything specific right, right now, but it's, it's in the employer report. There's some information about, you know, what we heard from some of the employers about examples of, of things that they had come across as working particularly well.
Okay.
Whether they meet best practices and, you know, that, you know, that would, you know, require some additional follow-up, but it, it's just kind of some off the, off the top of the head comments from some of the employers.
And I guess, Jennifer, we can talk about next steps offline, but...
Sure. And I have some of those contacts, as do some of my other colleagues in the district. And I would say, too, we rely on our CISA's and our state-level organizations.
Sure.
Jeff was with that, too. So I definitely have districts in mind that I would like to talk with more.
Good. No point in reinventing the wheel if we can go steal it somewhere. The other, I guess, is just a, a comment. And when I, I was thinking about the, what everyone was talking about, you know, high school counselors and the time, and the, you know, where they're spending their time now. And this is my observation, having three in high school right now, and this is not a, a knock or a negative against them. But honestly, I don't even think of the counselors as a tool or a mechanism to help me with planning. I think of the counselors as a tool to help make sure that the kids graduate. And what happens from that point forward, like everyone else said, is, is on me. And I guess I never really made that connection until I was going through this and heard some of my, my peers mention that. It's, you know, it's going into these meetings and checking the box, you're going to have your English electives, you're going to have your math. I mean, if we're going to do this right, in my opinion, like, we have to almost turn this whole thing on its end and really change expectations, I mean, fundamental job expectations. And like it said in one of the slides, right, add more counselors. Maybe, you know, you've got the ones who deal with behavior, discipline, whatever, and you have others that deal with, you know, career and, and planning like that. Because it just, I, and I'm seeing people shake their heads, I just don't go there, you know, when I, when I think of that today. And it's not that they couldn't or, or are not capable, I'm sure they are. But it goes right, you know, to what everyone else said. It's where we're prioritizing their time today. And how do we get a better mix of, of spending it in these areas, you know, not just in the, the discipline side or the, you know, what have you. So to me, that's probably going to be one of our biggest challenges that we'll have out there. Everyone else had asked and answered the questions I have, so.
Yeah, I have one more. Just an observation. You had a focus group with sixteen employers in a community that has hundreds of employers. And I'm just thinking that, from a resource standpoint, there are employers out there that I'm sure if they were involved, would get involved and be part of developing some programs and apprenticeships, those sorts of things. And I'm just, that's one of my observations, is that ultimately, we want to keep these people and these kids in the community and in being employed by the employers here that need them. So that's just an observation.
I believe you're right. And our employers would, would echo that. And there's certainly more than the, the number of employers there that we partner with regularly. I think some of the organizations that are especially helpful to us are the Chamber overall, which of course we're members of. And then I think about groups like SWIMA, the Central Wisconsin Manufacturing Alliance, or WATIA, the Auto and Education Association, all of our employers that do host youth apprentices right now. And then when we look to our partners, like, say at the technical college level, they often have advisory boards for their different career areas, their different content areas, and they are really good resources to us as well. So you're right, there are a lot of people that want to partner with us, and we are equally excited to partner with them.
Jennifer, when is a good time to get a follow-up on this, in terms of what the administration wants to do from an action plan standpoint? How long do you guys need before you come back to us with some changes, recommendations, what have you?
That's a good question. What we've done so far is our principals and some of our lead counselors have had a little bit more information than you got tonight. We didn't want to get too much in front of you in the community, but they have seen a presentation with Sharon, and the secondary team and I are meeting, again, tomorrow, and this is one of our agenda items, just to say, so you heard this a couple weeks ago. Where are you? What do you think? When we did the initial meeting, I just asked people to, to kind of making, start making a list of, what do we want to keep doing? What might we want to start doing or tweak that we're doing? And anything that may or might want to stop? You know, we're going to set this aside and put our focus here instead. And then we're hoping next week to have Sharon present in a virtual way that will, that allow all of our middle and high school staff, anybody who's interested to join. It'll take the place of a traditional staff meeting, so that anybody can opt in. So then we'll have a larger group that will have heard it. So I would say, within a, within a few weeks, and I can talk with Keith about what would be a good timeline, maybe to bring it back formally at a meeting.
Why don't, why don't we tentatively put this on the April ed ops agenda as a follow-up? If you need, you know, a couple weeks to get the group together. I don't think it goes without saying, this is like really what we're about. So the sense of urgency, and my senses on those four categories that we had listed, we're a long ways away from some of those. And that's not anybody's fault, it's just a reality. So I think a sense of urgency and some, some time and, and energy behind this is going to be a good thing.
Definitely. Just one, oh, go ahead.
I just wanted to add, because I was just, I don't need Shannon for this, if you, you want to let her go. But I just wanted to say that, one of the first things I wrote down when you were talking was a pamphlet with the milestones, you know, accordion-shaped, you put on the wall in the kid's bedroom, and they can check them off as they go. We could do it for the UW system and invite other colleges to send their own version. And as far as counselors, we definitely need more. But they need to work with the same kids, instead of dividing them up. And because kids on autism spectrum, and we have more of them than we even know, change is difficult for these kids. And to go through these steps, they need help with each one. So they need their counselors to be there with them to make each step. So when a counselor has many of these on their case, they need to have a lightened load. And all those things need to be looked into, so that we are helping every kid become what they want to become. And it's more money. Everything seems back to more money.
I would be remiss if I didn't point out that we just added, thanks to our community, a lot of people services staff.
Yes, we did.
So that, that is really going to be a helpful piece. And I think one of the things that came out of some of our initial meetings, too, was to look at some sort of, kind of like a time study for counselors, get a sense of where are they spending their time? What else would they, and how would they like to shift some of those things? As we have other social workers and more psychologists in the district, how might that help shift?
Okay.
Yes, these are, we're excited about this.
Easy to get into the classes about, you know, the social studies class, where that can go. It wouldn't even take a class period, take a part of a class period. If this interests you, these are the paths you can take.
I think the other thing that's important, and we remind ourselves about this, as much as the community is, our school counselors are amazing, and they have some specific training in this area, and they are not in any way the sole people responsible for this work. Every one of our teachers should be able to talk to our students about, this is why we're doing this work, this is how this work will connect you to other opportunities, this is how the things you learn in my class are going to make your life better one day. All of us have that responsibility. Our counselors are good and can help the rest of us get better.
They are excellent.
Our career and technical education teachers live in this world all the time and can help the rest of us get better.
Maybe we make it a graduation requirement, that a parent has to come in once a semester and put some onus on the parents, right?
And we need teachers that are willing to mentor students. They, we have teachers that mentor other teachers, but now we need teachers that can mentor students.
Okay.
So we have more teachers.
Just one more quick suggestion. You mentioned this, but I think it's, it's critical, if you're going now, to look for implementation of some of these things. I think key earlier is better. That late middle school years are probably the best time. And I think having had kids who have taken the Health OCS class, it'd be really great if there was some OCS classes like that offered at the middle school level, in the trades, in IT, in Health OCS, in education. You know, there's, there's so many opportunities in those earlier years, like you said, where rule in or rule out, because sometimes, once you get on a path at that freshman year, you're just sort of on a trajectory. And it's hard to add in something brand new. I had a community member who's, who's very, feels very strongly about IT exposure happening more significantly in the middle school years, because if they have not been exposed and kind of been enlightened to it, and they aren't starting at their freshman year, they're not going to. And the need is so great compared to the, the students that are actually going into it with regard to what the job need is. It's been a real problem in his, his employment situation. So anyway, that earlier better, for sure. And/or if we can even establish at each of the high schools, an expert, so to speak, where that, that's all they do, is sort of help with this post-graduation timeline. You know, and on, it's nice to have the personal, maybe in the homeroom teacher that you have for four years or whatever, but also maybe someone who's just taking care of timeline questions for parents, and it unweights every other counselor having to, you know, and they can kind of become the expert in, what does it look like to manage the college app? What, what are the needs for when you should do college visits or visit a trade school, or be doing some job shadows in the summer of your sophomore year, or whatever? I just think that that might be nice, rather than try and expect everyone to become an expert, you know, on some level as well. So I'm excited. That's great.
Thank you. Jim, one quick comment?
I'm going to piggyback off of what President McKee said. Bottom line is, why don't you bring back and tell us what you're doing? Because we're not here to suggest to you. And you're nodding your head, like, yeah, we're doing that, we're doing that. I'd like to hear what we're doing. So if you can bring that back.
Absolutely.
Because that's your job, not my job. So thank you.
Perfect. Thank you both very much. This was extremely informative.
Thank you.
Okay. Item five, Wisconsin School Nutritional Purchase, Nutrition Purchasing Cooperative Agreement. This is an action item as well?
Hello, I'm Karen Fox, the Nutrition Services Director. Nice to see all of you back again this year. Just looking for some recommendation tonight that I can continue to purchase through the Wisconsin School Nutrition Purchasing Cooperative. We have been a member of this cooperative since I've been with the district over the last six years. So it provides a lot of good food purchasing pricing. It has allowed us to keep our vendor this year. Food purchasing is not a fun thing this year. It's been quite difficult for supplies, food, chemicals, you name it. So this group is a, is quite a backbone for me and for our district. So I just am looking for you to, for approval that we continue.
Okay. Questions? It's fairly straightforward. Okay. All right. Hearing none, I am seeking a motion to recommend to the full Board of Education to continue membership in the Wisconsin School Nutrition Purchasing Cooperative by passing the presented resolution and agreeing to the 2022-2023 66.0301 Cooperative Agreement.
Second.
First and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right. Item six. This is also listed for action, our grades three to five ELA resource adoption. I'm going to ask, we do this the same way that we did with the career discussion. We'll let you guys present, and we can aggregate our questions up till the end.
I think we're good. We'll just slide this around. It'll be okay. Well, thank you all. We're here to share some exciting updates on an important decision for the students in our district. Seems really logical that we would follow up a conversation about preparing our kids to be college and career-ready with a conversation about the foundational skills that we need to provide around literacy acquisition for our elementary students. I have two of my colleagues here that I'll allow to introduce themselves, to talk us through the year-long vetting process that we've been through to select the ELA resources. Prior to walking through the year-long vetting process that we have been through, and the folks that were at the table to make this important decision, I just want to provide a little context for the board. And reminder that this decision actually around adoption of a new three-five ELA resource was slated to occur in the spring of 2021. So we extended our contract with Wonders, who is our current provider or publisher, for three through five, for an additional year, as we elected to begin the 2020 school year virtually. At that time, we had some concerns about our ability to be able to bring large groups of teachers together safely to do this important work. So we felt that that time was the best decision to stick to the resource that we were using, knowing that this decision was coming. So we're here tonight with great enthusiasm and excitement on a day that really has in some ways felt like it would never get here. And to share what the process has been, what the process we've been through in the last year, I will allow my colleagues to introduce themselves.
Sounds great. I'm going to just set that, so it doesn't get in the paint anyway. So I am Melanie Hansen, and I think this is the first time that I've been able to come to you personally. So I am a twenty-three-year veteran teacher and reading interventionist, and I am the instructional coach for the Title I schools in our district, and Lynn's literacy partner.
I am Lynn Strayla, the district reading specialist. I've worked for the district for over thirty years. So I, I recognize the faces of many of you. We thank you for allowing us the chance to share this adoption proposal for a new literacy resource for third through fifth grade students. And we have a slide deck to share with you that will walk everyone through the year-long process in which Wit and Wisdom by Great Minds and Phonics for Reading by the Curriculum Associates rose to the top as the strongest literacy resources for the students of the Wassa School District. These two resources will help us in our quest to reach the Wassa School District's strategic plan of increasing teacher proficiency and increasing student achievement in all demographic groups. We went into the vetting process very aware of the importance of aligning our goals with the goals outlined in the strategic plan. We believe that the design of the Wit and Wisdom lessons will inspire and support teachers in the use of more highly effective instructional practices, and allow for greater collaboration, creativity, and critical thinking in the areas of both reading and writing. This will have a direct and positive impact on all learners in all demographic groups. So let us walk you through our year-long vetting process. We began the process by identifying team members to represent each school, each grade level, and each department that works with students in third through fifth grades. Many of our vetting team members were also members on our longstanding elementary ELA leadership team. However, to ensure that every school and every department was represented, we extended invitations to a few additional staff members, including teachers, another principal, a middle school teacher, and our technology department, the instructional specialists. In total, we had twenty-eight staff members on the vetting team. And I would like to thank our vetting team members, some who are in our audience today, and many who are watching online, for their diligence to this vetting process.
So we do kind of have some smiles and laughter about the process, because it does seem like we started this two years ago. But then in other respects, we think October twelfth, wasn't that just two weeks ago? So we just want to kind of bring to you a little bit of a timeline as we walk through the process. So on October twelfth, we did meet with our entire ELA leadership team, and we
and we began the vetting process. At that time, we shared kind of the timeline and hopefully the goals and the timeline of outcome that we wanted to reach our decision by. It was back on October 12th that our goal was to bring this to the March Board meeting, and here we are today. So at that time, when we first met with the leadership team, we gave them the first task. We shared a Google survey for them to take back to their team. And we asked them to share this with their colleagues and in their buildings and gather names of vendors and different publishing companies that they hear good things about. Maybe they've used this curriculum in different districts. Maybe they have a friend that teaches in a neighboring district that really liked certain aspects of the curriculum. We encouraged them to look at reports such as EdReports, which is a reliable, incredible, kind of rating source online for them to kind of do their own research and bring to the table some lists of suggestions. And back at that time, some of the suggestions that we got actually Wit and Wisdom was nominated by a lot of members at that time back in October. Then we went to October 29th where we met with just the vetting team. And at that time, we really had kind of a lot of big rocks during that meeting. We really tackled a lot of big ideas to kick off our vetting process. One of the first things that we did was we all shared kind of like our literary literacy vision. Like if we could kind of dream up a perfect setting in the literacy world for our learners, what would that look like? And everybody shared what they saw as a valued experience for all of our learners in the district. Then we also spent quite a bit of time looking at the new Wisconsin standards and taking a peek at the key shifts, the articulation of all of the rigor and the different, I'm going to say, expectations for especially writing and speaking and listening. So we noticed the key changes in those new Wisconsin standards. And then we also took a look at the different instructional practices. A lot of buildings were using this rebounding article by Hattie, who is a respected researcher in education. And a lot of buildings were using his work to kind of ground themselves in practice and instructional practices, rebounding and recovering from the, I don't know what, the, the new normal, now that kids were coming back to school in our new normal. So we spent some time exploring that. We talked about access for education for all of our learners. We looked at data and some of the challenges and barriers that we're seeing as trends in the district and kind of owning the good and the bad and the ugly of that part of the work and what we could do to make the experience better for all of our learners. And we used a lot of the DPI guiding practices for their criteria for vetting full curriculum for literacy. And then this slide we just included, that was just an articulation for you, for your reference, so that you could kind of look at some of the key shifts that are standouts in the new ELA standards. Then it brought us to January and after Christmas. And there was a lot of work between October and January. We held a lot of virtual meetings and we had to be very flexible. The process really had to look different compared to past vetting processes due to the circumstances. It seemed that all of the vendors, all of the neighboring districts, all of the references, everyone was struggling with coverage, subs, you know, kind of filling all of those spots in buildings where there was a need. So sometimes it was really hard to make connections, even in our own district. You know, it was, we were very limited on subs and coverage and pulling teachers for site visits. So we really did hold a lot of virtual meetings and email question and answer sessions. And those evenings led us to materials preview evenings where we had four different vendors send us all of the materials from their company. And we held like a self-guided exploration night of these materials where the vetting team could come into Longfellow here and we had snacks out. And they could, at their leisure, kind of walk around and view all of the materials and kind of do a little note catcher and kind of create some of their own questions going into our vendor preview day. So at that time, we also had a lot of members that went above and beyond, and they took some of the materials home. They accessed online portals and sandboxes to explore. And we do know that it was a very challenging year for staff. And there was a lot of new barriers and obstacles that they were experiencing in the classroom. And we really could not thank them enough for all of their extra time and efforts and the, the self-reflection and the questioning that they really intentionally went into looking at these materials with. We really appreciated all of their extra time. And they're all sitting, a lot of those people are sitting behind us. We appreciate their support and extra time.
So that brought us to January 17th, which was a very exciting day for our vetting team. It was the day that we had vendor presentations. And because it was a full day of professional development for the district, we were able to get the full vetting team together without having to worry about subs and people being pulled back into buildings. So we had our full team. We had arranged for three, well, we had narrowed down our, our selections now to, to three of the, the top resources. And we had arranged for hour-long presentations from each of the vendors. Some were in, in person, some were virtual, one was a combination of virtual and in person. And this allowed our team members to hear presentations by users of the, the materials. So we, we had a chance to ask questions. We had a rubric that we had developed based on the Wisconsin state standards and on, according to guidelines from the Wisconsin DPI. So that's what we were using to, to follow. But it really gave our, our team members a chance to listen to actual people who had used the, the resource, reflect on the resources. We had lengthy discussions. We had a few question and answers back and forth with the, the presenters. And we had really a lot of great conversation in between the, the different presentations. At the end of that day, we narrowed down our decision now to two of the vendors. So we were kind of narrowing down the process, getting closer and closer to, to our, our top resource. And then after that, there were still a few questions, you know, like after the day, we had gotten emails the next day saying, I thought of one more question. I thought of one more question. So we did forward all of those on to, to the vendors for, for continued conversation with them.
Which then took us to the next step. And at this time, we really did focus on very specific details around implementation and teacher support. We started contacting all of the reference checks that were provided to us from the companies that we had vetted. We began multiple emails, phone calls, Zoom meetings with different representatives and instructional coaches and specialists in all these different districts. Chris, as well as John Uding and Melissa and Laura and the rest of the tech integration specialists, they worked with us behind the scenes to make sure that all of our technology would integrate with all of the steps in the Wassa School District with our platforms. And we really did, really spend some time really having honest conversations with all of the references about adopting a new curriculum and the shift in instructional practices and learning from them. What were some of your barriers? And then how can we plan for some of those barriers to support our teachers and our learners? So we really did have some very open and honest conversations. And how can we transition into the next school year, coming off of all of these challenging years for our teachers, to make this as supportive as we could make it? So we did spend a lot of time asking about rollout procedures and how each program would support our teachers. And that was very important to us. And we just wanted to share this. We couldn't go without our presentation and sharing this. So one of the contacts that we spoke with was Erin Conrad. She is a principal in the Stoughton area. She is a former multilingual learner teacher. And we had a wonderful conversation with her and her energy and her enthusiasm in regards to what she is seeing in her learners in her buildings and the difference that she is seeing in their leadership and some of the performance tasks that learners are doing. She just beamed with pride about what her students were able to accomplish. And after we spoke, she sent an email to me, very excited about possibly a partnership and how she could support us if indeed we did adopt this program. And we wanted to share a video that she sent us. This is a seven-minute video that her staff had made for the Wisconsin.
Can I ask, we, we have access to this link. We'll, we'll view the, the video offline because it's included in here. You guys just want to continue with your presentation?
Sure.
Thank you.
The link below is just a snippet. And if you wanted to watch just the part instead of the whole portion. So there's two links available there. Yep, you bet.
Okay, next slide. All right. So Friday, February 17th was another district-wide professional learning day and another opportunity for our full vetting team to, to meet. We had shared with the team that Wit and Wisdom was the resource that had really checked all of our boxes. Meaning it, it met our criteria for aligning with the new Wisconsin ELA standards. It included highly effective instructional practices. And it really had a great potential for increasing student engagement. So it basically encapsulated our literacy vision that we had created on our very first meeting day. We did have a discussion about the rollout process. We fully acknowledged that there is going to be a learning curve for our teachers, our intermediate teachers, like we fully acknowledge that. We have plans to support our teachers and Melanie is going to be sharing those on another slide and just a, a few slides. And then we also had a second and more detailed virtual question and answer session with a Wit and Wisdom trainer and representative from, from the company. And then I think after that is when like the fun really began for the teachers because we got into grade level teams and we actually looked at one of the lessons the teachers were highlighting, the teacher moves, the student moves, you know, what the students actually did. And you could just hear this buzz in the room as the teachers were getting excited about, oh, I could do this and I could do this. And one of the teachers was saying, I need a bulletin board for space because I'm going to post this. Like you could just really see the teachers as they, the more they dug into it, the greater energy and excitement was building in the room. So we left pretty, pretty excited about the, the process of the, the day. So as a result of this year-long process and our many hours of discussion and research and reflection and, and conversations, the vetting team recommends Wit and Wisdom and Phonics for Reading for our three-five adoption beginning next year.
This is just a summary from the company. It's an inquiry-based curriculum that uses textbooks for rich conversations. There's a lot of speaking and listening for students to be engaged with. And the focus is very inquiry-driven with students kind of carrying the cognitive load in the classroom and the teacher being more of a facilitator role.
So Wit and Wisdom was very transparent from the beginning of, of this process that they do not provide lessons in the foundational areas of phonological awareness and phonics. So we knew that if we had adopted Wit and Wisdom, we would need some supplementary materials to, to fill in those gaps. So again, we vetted several different programs and kind of narrowed it down and narrowed it down until we came with Phonics for Reading, which was authored by a very highly esteemed educational consultant, Dr. Anita Archer. Her expertise is in the area of explicit instruction. So this program really focuses on older students. So when you look at, and it's very foundational skills, but it's designed for older students. So the text, the features, even the illustrations, they, they don't look babyish. You know, they're, they're designed for older students. So we were really pleased with, with that part. And we also found out that this is a very commonly used partner program with Wit and Wisdom. So other districts have found this same connection between Phonics for Reading and Wit and Wisdom.
And the last portion of this that we took under strong consideration is just the training for Wit and Wisdom and Phonics for Reading. One of the things that impressed us so much with Wit and Wisdom was their commitment to training. There is a group of teachers that wrote this program. And you can tell that it's a group of teachers at their philosophy of training from that lens. So they offer a wide variety of different trainings. They offer principal training. They offer training for productive struggle and meeting the needs of multilingual learners. They have several stages of teacher training. They have training two to three months after teachers start using the program. So there really is a commitment to follow through in the program. And every single reference check that we made, they said that Wit and Wisdom's customer service and teacher support is nothing but exceptional. And that really had a lot to leverage with us. We were, we really valued that in their company. And every question that we have had, every wondering that we have wondered, they have responded to us personally with a phone call or a Google Meet or an email on that day. So we have been nothing but impressed with their service and commitment to training and support.
Thank you. And that leads us to our recommendation for tonight to approve the adoption of the new three-five English Language Arts Core curricula implementation beginning in the 2022-23 academic year as presented here. So Wit and Wisdom and Phonics for Reading. But at this time, we certainly would be happy to entertain any questions that members of the board may have.
All right, let me seek the motion to approve the adoption of new three through five English Language Arts core curricular resources as presented. Okay, we have a first and a second. Now we can move to questions. Lance?
Yeah. So whenever we change to a new resource, I worry a little bit about the extra work that's, comes along with that. Because even if a current resource gets an update, it's still going to be more. And I worry a little bit too that when you review a resource like this, there's this grass is always greener kind of thing that can creep into the review process. Because when you've worked with something for years, you start to see what the imperfections are. And I think that you will find them in this program as well. And it's replacing a program or resource that a different committee came here and told us was great. Okay, so, so I have all of those concerns. But on the other hand, I'm not an ELA expert and you had a team full of experts to make the decision. So for me, it's more of a review of what the process was than what the end result was. You know, if you came in here and, and went through the presentation and I learned that there weren't any teachers involved in the decision, I'd say, well, I don't agree with that process. And so for me, it's really just more a review of the process than the actual decision because I mean, I don't have the information that your team had. And if I did, I wouldn't have the expertise to use it properly. So I think the process itself sounds pretty good. So, you know, I support it in terms of the process that was used to get to that decision.
And I agree with Lance. You took most of the words right out of my mouth. So I'm telling from your enthusiasm that you think this is head and shoulders above our current system, which makes it worth doing all the extra work it is to implement this? Is that?
From some of the feedback that we had from districts that we interviewed, as well as vetting team members, everyone was impressed with the engagement of the learners in this style of instruction. And I feel like Lynn could probably speak to this as well. We really did have a lot of thoughtful conversations with the vetting team. We had a lot of brave space conversations because I feel like in my 23 years as a professional, I've never been through. say, you know, really, a program is a program, and the rigor and the intensity and the evidence-based curriculum is important, however, it's what we also do with it. And it's part of the teacher magic as well. So I feel like, just to kind of reflect back to Mr. Trollope's comment, you're right, you know, there isn't going to be the perfect program for every learner. It's going to be how we use it, what we do with it, the connections that we build with our students, and hopefully through this, that will happen.
I'm glad to hear that.
So we do have several ideas of ways that our teachers can collaborate and support each other. We do PLCs within every school on a weekly basis, and now that we've discovered we can do Google Meets, like maybe there's a few positives that came out of the pandemic, and that might be one of them. Like we literally can have Google Meet PLCs across the district. So when we first adopted Super Kids and Wonders, we had afternoon sessions or after-school sessions. We supported our teachers in that way. Like Melanie was saying, we have heard such great things from this company and not just, I mean, like from teachers who are using it too, not just the company reps. Obviously, they're going to say wonderful things about their program. But we are intending to have cross-school, cross-district PLC opportunities.
And we did have a lot of conversations with the integration specialists and John Uding, and how can we leverage the new LMS for district collaboration? How can we house common templates and graphic organizers so there's access for all of our teachers, so we can kind of collectively support one another? Because I do honor the work that all of the teachers have been doing the last few years, and it isn't going to be a perfect time to adopt a new curriculum. So how can we be mindful of that hard work and help bridge that gap the best we can?
So I have a couple of questions and similar concerns, I guess, as Lance mentioned. I want to acknowledge, I know a ton of work has obviously gone into this, and I do not have the expertise in this area by any means. I did have a couple of conversations and spoke with some people in a different district, actually, in the southern part of the state, just about their curricular process and how and why and when and all of that. Because the timing is concerning to me. I'm really sensitive to how burdened our teachers have been for two years and adding this. And then in addition, our students who are not where we want them, have not recovered from the academic loss, and there will clearly be an implementation dip that happens with every new resource. And I just don't, I'm concerned, can we afford to have students dip further while the clunky implementation process is happening? So I guess my question is, is this sort of like, there's a timeline, we need this done now because we were intending for it in the spring of '21, right? And everybody, everything's been paused, everything's changed, the vetting process didn't even go the way you would have wanted it, I'm sure, to go. So I guess that's a concern to me, because I tend to be cautious about rushed decisions that haven't been well thought through. Not that, and I by no means want to imply it hasn't been thought through. I know it has been, and you guys have done your due diligence with what you've been given. You know, my only, or primary concerns are adding that additional level of burden using new resources and then anticipating in that interim of implementation, my understanding is there's always a dip. And I don't know if our, especially in ELA, like I was like, oh, if this was like social studies, you know, but ELA and math right now, it just feels a little risky to me. And so I want to hear from you, why you feel like, nope, we understand all of those things better than you do, and we've thought them through, and this is why we still think this is the best time, is what I'd like to hear. And additionally, just what you mentioned, kind of how you're going to do some shared best practices and that kind of thing, where will that time, in light of this sub-s shortage that you've spoken of and all of those things, where will that actually come for teachers to fit this new thing in if they have to implement? I guess an additional question, sorry, I have a bunch, I've spent a lot of time looking at this, is what tip, is this standard practice to do it like this? I'm new to this. Rather than piloting it, or is this pretty typical? Is that, I've not been on the board for long enough to see any curriculum new come, and so I don't know if this is typically how our district does this, or in a normal season, which we have not been in for two years, we would have done it differently, and now this is just the way we need to do it because of. So maybe start there.
I'll just quick answer the pilot question, and I can pass to Lynn, and she can add to. We did talk to wit and wisdom about a pilot and wonder about a pilot just because of the timing, and we have been very sensitive to what everyone's experience has been the last few years. Because the whole foundation of the program is based on all of the book sets, to buy, you know, a district-wide collection of Love That Dog book, it's a large investment. So a lot of districts cannot afford to do a pilot because they would have to provide all of those textbooks for their entire district. So the investment upfront in that first year is a pretty heavy investment, so we were recommended that we wouldn't probably want to go that route with a pilot.
So then also with a pilot, for the teachers who are, maybe it's not the full district, maybe it's a small group of teachers, then they are investing that time into learning the new curriculum. And then to say to them, oh, we've decided to go with something else. So now they have spent at least, you know, maybe a quarter or a semester of their time learning a new program that we aren't using. So I don't, I don't know the last time we really truly piloted a program in the district.
Okay, so that's not typically the way it's done?
Not typically that, no.
So I can just, in the 11 years that I've been an administrator in the district, the adoptions or implementations have always been universal.
Okay.
Yeah, so we've not done small-scale pilots, at least in the time that I've been here. That certainly may have occurred prior to my time in the district, but in the time that I've been here, both ELA and math implementations and adoptions have been universal.
Considering the amount of movement that we have with our students between schools and in and out of schools.
It creates challenges.
Difficult to do.
A partial, sure. Okay.
Jim?
You had me sold on Fisher, Frye, and Danielson. Obviously, these are the people that have been around for many, many years, and pedagogy that go along with it. I'm sure the teachers have looked at that very carefully. You sold me also on phonics for reading, being an ex-English teacher. Let's get back to phonics. You know, that goes back to the years, many years past. So I'm hoping that this is going to help us get past some of the loss that we have had the last two years. So I'm sure you have been talking about that within your meetings, and so consequently, it sounds good to me because of the fact that you have vetted it so well and the timeline that you have gone through in order to get this accomplished with as many people as you have had involved with it, I think is a good way. And I don't remember, to answer your question either, being in education for 42 years, I don't remember a lot of pilots being very successful, because you don't get a lot of good feedback from that. It's splattering all over the place. But the point is, we should always question, when we make a complete turnaround, is this going to be a good turnaround? And that's what our responsibility is, to ask those questions. So you sold me on a few names, you sold me on what you've done in the process, like Lance stated. I'm looking forward to seeing success.
You're too. Karen, I don't want to lose your question on when will the time come for teachers? So teachers at every grade level in all grades three through five in every building across the district have a common hour of planning time each day. So that additional PLC or collaborative planning time, we have not used that, or we've not been as intentional about using that across buildings in the past, but we see some opportunity to do that here, to support all of our students and also support all of our staff. So that's where that additional time would come from. It would not come from outside of their regular school to air contract day.
Great, I appreciate that. I mean, and I know that's important, of course, to all of you too. I don't want to suggest that it's not. One of the things that I found interesting, and maybe it's not even worth saying, but this individual I spoke with from another district had said that they had made the decision, instead of investing money and resources in a new curriculum resource, it's they were investing money in their people, and all of their resources are going into training their teachers to become experts in teaching literacy and knowing the standards more than becoming masters of giving a new program, which makes a lot of sense to me, but it costs a lot of money too. It's not free by any means, it's not. But I, so I just, we all know, no program is a magic bullet. And so I think, I'm sure you've thought it all through, but those are my concerns, and I just want to make sure that we, if you feel confident that you, the teachers have really supported this decision and are excited and want to do this too, that's, you know, important to me and I'm sure all of us and you as well. So, you know, we only know what you guys share, obviously, so.
And I feel like the concerns that have been shared have only made us stronger because we know some of the concerns, and then how can we help support that? So it's good that the concerns are out there for us to support.
Just a follow-up question, Chris. So all the PLCs that have been created in all the buildings, they are aware of the fact that that PLC time will be used, the focus on implementation of the program, is that correct?
So.
Again, needs to be affirmed so that, again, timeline, you know, I don't have to explain that to you.
Yeah, and I mean, since we've implemented PLCs now for the last 11 to 12 years, there has been an expectation of troubles in every building. There's a minimum of one of those common planning times per week to be able to come together and continue the collaborative work that needs to occur. We have on occasion specifically earmarked that time with, or aligned it with content or with particular topics. So that's not uncommon in terms of some of the work that we've done or some of the practices that we've had in the past. So we want to create some additional opportunities for teachers to be able to engage in supporting each other more collaboratively.
See, and I think that's what the board needs to hear because of the fact that PLCs have been around for a long period of time, you know, so that that is working together. When you have your teams of teachers and then pressure on our IT people to make sure the technology is going to be flowing among all the buildings, and, you know, that is good for us to hear.
And the intent of that time has always been really to create support systems for teachers, right? So it's not about compliance or something they have to do. It really is time that's carved out that allows them to be able to come together and support each other. That's our hope.
All right. Any other comments or questions for you?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. I share the same concerns that I've heard up here on the timing and, you know, with achievement gap. And I guess one thing I was maybe expecting to see but didn't see in the presentation was maybe more of a analysis or data set comparing, I guess, wonders to wit and wisdom. And I know you had the video, which I had not had a chance to view from the, was it Principal in Stoughton? So I don't know if some of that information was in that video. It's also my understanding that wit and wisdom is also used by DC Everest. I don't know if we have any data that they've been able to collect, if they, I don't think they've been using it for more than, so they might not have that data. But just a comparative data from one curriculum to the other on why this one is going to help achievement gap with students versus what we're using today. And I, so if that's not available, I guess, do you have any comments on that sort of data or what we would expect to see?
And I'm sure, do you want to chime in on any of the references that you did?
I don't have any specific comparative data. All that we have is kind of the Ed Report rankings and some of the reports that third parties have done. The only thing that we have is just that the researchers, Hattie, Sophia, Fisher, we have those instructional practices that are embedded in that program. So all of those instructional practices that we have called high-leverage instructional practices this year, all of those features are in wit and wisdom. So if you take a look at different scaffolds, or if you take a look at exit tickets, or you talk about teacher clarity or specific learning targets, those are all present in that curriculum.
Anything to add that you could think of that I?
Anecdotally, so this is not hard and fast research, but anecdotally, when we, and you'll hear it in the video, the parents who are speaking are amazed at the conversations that their children come home with. The teachers have been amazed with the amount of writing and the differences in writing. We look at it as a reading program, and it has a full writing curriculum within it. And the teachers have just been amazed at the difference in the students' writing. So we do have high hopes because of the different types of instructional practices that we will be asking our students to do. Jim had talked before about rigor, relevance, and relationships, and when I think about this, like I jotted those three down, because I thought, this is what we keep hearing about this program. It is more rigorous, like, so I'm hoping that we can make up some of our academic loss.
Loss.
Loss, because we have more rigor. Definitely relevant, the third-grade team, when we got together, was looking at, it's a whole series of stories on immigration. When we were looking at it, it was right when our Afghan refugee families were moving into the district, and the teachers were thinking, like, we have these students in our schools, here's our stories about them, very relevant, and the relationships with the stories and the mentor texts that are used. These are some old, beloved, beloved classics that teachers have selected for this program very specifically. And there's, if you've ever been in a classroom and if you've done a great read aloud story with children, like that will, they'll carry that through the rest of the year with them. Remember when we read that story? Remember when we read that story? So like, I really think that those are the types of things that wit and wisdom lend itself maybe a little bit better than some of our other programming materials.
And interestingly enough, we were, it was recommended to us that we would take that curriculum, and we did this with the vetting team, where we made a copy of a complete first lesson, and we highlighted what the teacher was doing in the teacher moves compared to what the students were doing. And the students were in the driver's seat. The teacher was truly the facilitator, and the students were kind of learning through inquiry approach. And we were really kind of astounded at how much work the students really were engaged in and the opportunities that they had for their connections.
And that's big. Student-driven versus teacher-driven. That's a great classroom.
And I love that they have fiction and nonfiction books, because they're both different readings and both different skill sets. And as far as remembering when a teacher reads you a book, I can guarantee that my oldest, who is now 31, is still talking about listening to their teacher read them Harry Potter when it first came out.
Sure, sure.
Just a couple of questions from me. So the, I guess just to put a fine point on where John was going, so we don't have, we're not, we're, administration isn't signing up for any kind of advertised benefit, like we're going to increase these scores by X percent?
We've not, I mean, other than, we believe that the adoption and the implementation will get us closer to the 30% increase that we projected, and now that is by the end of 2023. So that is a lot of weight on the first year of implementation of a new resource. But we believe that the resource will get us closer to that, right? So we don't have hard outcome data to say, schools with a similar, districts with a similar demographic perform at this level using wonders and students with similar demographics, districts with similar demographics score at this level using wit and wisdom. We didn't do that kind of comparative analysis.
Okay.
So as Lynn shared, more of the evidence that we have has been anecdotal, and you will hear some of that in the video.
Okay. And then in terms of references, did you guys talk to anybody that stopped using wit and wisdom and moved to someone else?
Excellent question.
So as Lynn shared, more of the evidence that we have has been anecdotal and you will hear some of that in the video.
Okay. And then in terms of references, did you guys talk to anybody that stopped using wit and wisdom and moved to someone else?
Excellent question. No, we have not found anyone that stopped. We did speak to many districts that were adding. Like they had adopted maybe K two or three, five, and they were adding middle school. Those were the districts that we found were adding grade levels to their adoption.
I I would like and I'll have some suggestions here in a second. But I I think that's important because of course when we do vendor checks, right? You're only going to get the ones who are going to sing praises. They're not going to tell you about the people that fired them. And I usually find that information to be more valuable. Fire them is probably too strong of a word, but they moved away from them for some reason. It would be nice to understand some of the underpinnings of of those decisions. And the the other question I have is that when you do a a quick search on wit and wisdom reviews of the curriculum, you find a number of articles, frankly, that talk about controversial content that has been pulled. I there's special school board meetings that have been called to pull various books or pieces of it. I'm not going to begin to profess. I have no idea what the content was or is or is it appropriate, is it not? But there's a lot of information out there about kind of community discourse regarding after this was implemented, regarding acceptance of the material. Is it appropriate? Is it not appropriate, et cetera? And the last thing I want to do, I'll speak for myself. I don't want to speak for the other board members, is implement something that causes some kind of a divide, right? Because we haven't done a complete due diligence on what those controversies may be.
We actually researched that, if I may answer that.
Sure.
Quite heavily.
Quite heavily.
Okay.
Anticipating this question because if you Google wit and wisdom, it's what you find, right?
Quite a bit comes up from Williamson County in Tennessee and quite a bit comes up in Oklahoma. And we did research this. And interesting enough, there was a group that went to the school board in Williamson County to ask for the district to no longer use wit and wisdom. And after I'm not sure all of their steps, but after they went through their process, the board did vote to keep wit and wisdom. And when we researched that, it was because of certain topics within some of the units. So called out specifically was the book Hatchet by Gary Paulson, which because it it referenced divorce. And so that was a book that was a concern. And actually, I have it here somewhere. But wit and wisdom has an alternative text for Hatchet. So if there was a district that did not want that that book taught because of the reference for divorce, they have an alternate text. There's also a book in the third grade in their the sea unit. And it talks about two seahorses swimming closely together. And so if there was a teacher that was not comfortable with that reference in the book, there's an alternative text as well.
Okay.
So wit and wisdom has come out with a few alternate text titles that teachers could use in place of some of those books that kind of raised raised a level of concern.
Okay. And I I didn't even see the Oklahoma one when I was doing the I'm just, you know, this has happened in Wheeling, Ohio, Floyd County, Kentucky, Livingston Parish, Louisiana, Laramie County, Wyoming. It it just seemed like there's a and this is recent, like within the last couple of years. I I guess I'm just trying to be overly cautious to make sure that we have all of our bases covered there because we've all seen the news across the country, you know, and that is the last thing that we want to bring here considering where where we're at. And again, I'm not here to profess or to judge what is or is not appropriate. I'm just trying to think down the road. I want to be able to prevent special board meetings and, you know, whatever else may go on. And and not that just because someone disagrees with two seahorses is a reason to not do something. But is there a broader theme within this content? Or is there a larger concern that perhaps we just need more information about to gain a comfort level? Because I will tell you right now, based on what I've seen, and it's not that your presentation didn't necessarily address it. It's just I I've got a concern about that right now. Before I'm comfortable approving this, I would like to see more reference checks from people that moved away from it. And also discussions with some of these other schools and school districts that kind of lays out what what were those issues? You know, was it one book? Was it two books? Is there a bigger theme there? If that does that make sense?
It does make sense. And, you know, I think the one thing that I was really impressed with was prior to us or any member of our vetting team raising some of those same questions, because they did all the same Google searches that everyone else has done around wit and wisdom. And they were very forthcoming and upfront in terms of saying, you will find this. And we want you to know that we're aware and we want you to know that every time and in every instance in every district where it has come up and there has been a concern about a particular text, we are more than willing to work collaboratively with you to identify an alternate mentor text that still addresses the same standards. So wit and wisdom has really sort of hung their hat on the belief that we're about teaching the standards and alignment to the standards and the reading, writing, listening, speaking and language skills that kids need at that particular grade level. We've identified texts that we believe meet those needs and align with that learning.
Sure.
But in some instances, there have been communities that have had questions or there have been individual teachers that haven't had a level of comfort to be able to do that and do it with what's been provided. And they've been more than willing to accommodate those needs and those interests.
And there's a couple of districts that actually moved away from them after like the first year of implementation because of these issues out there apparently. So I guess I would just like to know more about that, that we are absolutely certain and tied off that those things are are not going to happen. But that's my my opinion. I.
We have addressed that with wit and wisdom. They have been very honest about us directly asking that question because you can Google and get that information on their website. They do have a statement about critical race on their website that they talk about and their rationale for the books that they've chosen. And it does seem to stem not with the standards, but the content in some of the books that has raised the level of concern, like the example with Hatchet. And a lot of our references, we were given a few references by wit and wisdom, but some of our other references we learned from references that we checked on. So for example, Erin Conrad, she shared, oh, you should call Baraboo School District. They just sent a team of teachers to our district. Or you should call Chippewa Falls. Chippewa Falls has been kind of cycling teams through to see our school. So some of the reference checks we got were actually from just teachers that we were speaking to in a district originally provided.
Okay. Yeah, I again, I personally, I just want to see the other side of that in terms of, you know, people that have moved away from them, districts that moved away from them. Why is that? What did they move to? And some of the benefits that maybe they saw, just a, I guess, a different way to look at it.
Definitely. Yeah. And a number of the reference checks that we conducted were not necessarily vendor recommended. They really were just provided by sort of word of mouth. And we became aware of districts that were implementing in the early stages of implementing wit and wisdom. And we just on our own accord reached out to them to see if they would have some open and honest dialogue regarding their barriers and hurdles they've encountered.
Okay. All right. Um, any Lee?
I guess I'm concerned about the same thing that you're reporting now. I was all excited about what I'd heard until I until I heard what you just what you just said. And I'm not I'm not quite as concerned about some of the pieces as to what we are willing to look at and what you have looked at in terms of possible alternatives that we as a district would implement if there are areas of question. So that's my that's my immediate concern. I don't want to have a big to do here about any particular issue either. And I think that we need to be sensitive to that. And we need to know that you've vetted those and are looking at the options if there are alternatives.
And I think, Lee, I would just like to create some sense of ease in the room by saying, you know, again, reiterating the exchanges that we've had with representatives from wit and wisdom up to this point to end that if indeed we do identify, you know, a particular text that touches on an issue that a particular teacher or even as a community we're not comfortable with, they have been more than willing to extend, you know, their knowledge and expertise in identifying an alternative. So I've I've taken great comfort in the commitment and the dedication that they've that they've provided. You know, the ones that you come up that come up as part of a Google search clearly are the ones that get a lot of media attention. So there are tons and tons of districts that, you know, have implemented fully and had no issue at all. But those unfortunately that, you know, have just gotten a little bit of media attention recently are the ones that show up most often. So by and large, this is an exception, not a rule.
Have you seen the list of books and you don't have a problem with any of them? That's good enough for me.
And we actually purchased a few of the recently purchased or a few of the alternative texts. And through the entire program, three, five, I believe that there are six titles. I think Hatchet, there's a Walk in the Woods, if I'm not mistaken. And we could supply you with that list, the alternative text list, if you'd like.
Okay, this is listed for action. We do have the first and second. So with no other and now Cody's also on the line, correct? Okay. Get back to the motion just so we're grounded here. All right. So the motion is to approve the adoption of new three through five English language arts core curricular resources as presented. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No.
No.
Do we?
Cody, are you still on?
I am.
Cody, would you vote yes to approve the curriculum or no to not approve it?
I would vote no at this time.
Okay, so I believe that's four to four. Okay. Four to four. That motion does not pass. Thank you.
What's our timeline for bringing back the extra information that you requested?
April?
We have a resource that is in, though we need to replace it with something.
Either right. Yeah, we'd have to replace it with something.
We have to replace it with something. So what's the timeline to bring back the additional information so we can look at this again?
April. Yeah, absolutely.
Yes, we can get answers to the questions that you posed. And we will reach out to a couple of folks that may have initially implemented and then made the decision to move.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, moving on. The next item is Mr. Boucher WASB Online Learning Platform. This is listed for possible action.
Funny to bring this to your attention from this kind of application of school boards. They are implementing a new platform, a learning platform for school board members throughout the state. And I'm going to I'm going to try to keep myself neutral on this because I can't vote one way or the other because I am a director and I cannot be pushing this. I've been told directly from Mr. Ashley that explain it. And if there's going to be a vote on it, it should be done without you so that you're not in the mix on that. So I'm just giving you the information on it. It would be the same thing for me for the rest of the region as well, that I couldn't push this forward. I would have to be this is the information. So if you take a look at the document, I don't want to bore you with all the different things here. But the the whole reason for the platform of learning was to help board members understand more about what's going on in their own districts. Learning about the legality, understanding legal roles, I just identify the topics, understanding the governing role of the school board, the roles and duties of school board officers, developing governance leadership skills, building a strong board superintendent relationship, the judicial role of the school board, et cetera, et cetera. All those are some of the many topics that there are podcasts and I want to not podcasts, but videos that the lawyers at WASB have put together. They would the webinars and that. That would be for anybody to view at any time. So with that, we can't get into this unless we buy it. All right. And the cost is around $900 for a board of seven to 11 members. Below that, it's like 750 for a board from five to seven. So with that, I throw this in front of you. Is this something that we would want to look at that would help expand our knowledge about what does it mean to be a board member in a district? I don't want to talk too long because it might sound like I'm persuading or trying to persuade.
Comments or questions?
I have some comments. When I when I first joined the board, there were meetings that to orient me as a new board member. And they were some they were very helpful and covered some of these subjects, but not all of them. And then over the course of the last few years, for example, as we started doing expulsion hearings and things, I've learned that because I came in and sat in with somebody that we were doing an expulsion hearing and an attorney explained it. It seems to me it would this would be a nice resource, but it could also should be a resource that's available for candidates that are running for a school board. And there should be some basic pieces that we as a school board may want to have anybody new that comes on board have the opportunity to get oriented. So I'm in favor of it. But I'm also questioning that it's only going it's not available, for example, with the new people that are running for school board right now, which I think would be really good information for people to have.
Once a school, a school board district has the password and ID, ID and password, it's available to all of us on the board. It also is available to the superintendent along with, I believe, one or two administrators to give out an ID password to new people. I I don't know if that's going to be a problem. I don't want to answer that question, what you're posing.
I just suggest that you might want to take it back to WASB. But in the meantime, I would make a motion that we that we purchase this.
Okay. So let me let me throw that out there then. It sounds like, Lee, you want to make a motion to go ahead and approve the 900-ish dollars expenditure on this WASB online learning platform?
And I'll second it.
Okay, so we have a first and a second. All right. Any other discussion?
I think exactly what Lee is saying. And I think we can't require anybody to do anything. We can't require other board members to do anything, but we could strongly suggest before someone sits in on their first expulsion hearing that they view this video. And we could even set it up that they could do it just before the meeting. There's a lot of information that they have and you don't always get all of it when you go to conventions and other trainings, but it's so well worth it.
Okay.
The differences between the complete platform access and then just the roles and duties of school board? Obviously, there's a price reduction.
Yes, the number of topics.
Okay.
Where's the part that explains the?
Roles and duties. So that would be included with the smaller fee. Developing governance. Developing governance leadership skills, building a strong board superintendent relationship, judicial role for the board, school finance, although Bob covers that for us.
Those those are in the.
Yeah, that would be in the the upper tier was my understanding.
Okay.
I would support this. I've really enjoyed the webinars that I've been able to but there's a limited time. Like they'll say, we're airing this right now from 12 to one on this day if you have the opportunity. And it's it's so limited and, you know, when you're working.
Okay.
I think I absolutely support access to this training.
Nice to that is that you can pull this up anytime you want, you know, when you're bored at night.
And you want to learn about.
All right. Okay, so it sounds like we have support. Let's go ahead and I will ask for a vote on the motion that we have the first and the second for to approve this online learning platform. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstention?
I abstain.
One abstention. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay. I will now seek a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned. Let's take, yeah, we'll go ahead and take.